Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Mayor Riegel.
Yeah.
Oh, shouldn't I, Mr. Schaefer, second Minister Browning, roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Mayor Riegel.
Yes.
Okay, continued review. Looks like Chief's already. Oh, you can slide that over. You look like you're way off.
Oh.
I moved it off the last one.
Have to bubble off.
Somebody's off. There you go. Now you're off.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to go ahead and present the Fire Department budget. As far as your budget packet, it's page 45. At the Fire Department, as you're well aware, we have a lot to be thankful for. And I'd like to first thank my staff for all the work that they've done in preparation and assisting me with this proposed budget, but also the work that they do day in and day out. As I mentioned, we have a lot to be thankful for. If you look around, what we've accomplished since 2010 with the fire levy, that could not have been done without, first, the support of City Council and all the work that you've done, or City Manager, Finance Director, and certainly the public as well. I think we've made a huge change in our organization as far as the culture of the department. And I believe we've really modernized our operations, and I'm very proud of the work that they have done. And I think we're meeting our community's needs. You see us involved in really every facet of our operations. But we continuously monitor the needs of the community and how we can reduce the risk to our community. So today, what our budget will do is focus on a lot of those type of changes. The first thing that I want to talk just briefly is about our accomplishments over the past year. I think as we continue to move forward, it's always good to reflect on what you've accomplished this year as well. If you remember, in 2010, we were working towards our fire levy, and one of the key things that had come up was our ISO rating. We were an ISO Class IV fire department. We are now an ISO Class II. There's only 241 fire departments nationwide as a Class I. So we're part of 1,300 that are Class II fire department, which makes a significant difference in residential and also commercial property rates for those agencies that are businesses that use ISO as their rating scale. And it's something to be very proud of because we were headed in the opposite way. We were nearly a Class V fire department. So we're very proud of that. Secondly, we've continued to hire and promote personnel. We've been working and we've, I've made recommendations for the promotion of three lieutenants for the opening of Station 304. We've also promoted one captain. Construction of Station 304, which I'll have some pictures all the way at the end of this presentation, is continuing to move forward. Our hope is to, mid-December, move furniture, start moving furniture in there and start operations from that station just after the first of the year. Our Quinn, we received that earlier this year. It's been placed in service. You've probably seen it. It was extreme benefit to the fire that we had downtown. Couple, well, actually, first Friday in October, when the Fire Department, along with Dogs, were being promoted, you saw that fire truck being utilized right in front of Buns. And then one other item I'm very proud of is our collective bargaining process and negotiations. This is the first time in many years that we've been able to negotiate a contract without going to mediation and also collective bargaining with that. And I think it was a very fair contract on all sides. So those were our accomplishments in 2018. As far as 2019, as I mentioned, in the first quarter of 2019, we're going to move forward with the opening of Station 304. That'll take us, as far as our response times, which we've been focused on, from the time the call received to a time we respond or arrive on scene of six minutes, our goal, that'll take us from a 71%, 70, 71% up to a 75. That area is still developing, but as you saw with the fire that we had late September, it's tremendous response time right now, getting it down there, and that'll make a tremendous difference. Secondly, as part of our 2019 budget, we're recommending the reallocation of one of our fire inspector's positions to a lieutenant. That person will oversee our Risk Reduction Division or our Fire Prevention Division as well. We're going to continue with the development of our personnel. Those that have served down the Civil Service Commission know that we've had a professional development plan for our personnel. All of our officers now, with the exception of one who is grandfather, have a college degree. Associate's degree, and most have a bachelor's degree. So we've turned that, as well as pushed forward many higher level of education for our officers. We're also going to be sending two of our personnel to paramedic school that are newly hired personnel. And two other items, not really demanding much of a budget, but as far as projects will be undertaken, will be the update of our codified ordinances, which has been close to 10 years since it's been updated. And we're going to do a comprehensive look at our community smoke detector program. We currently hand out smoke detectors, but one of the challenges that we face is ensuring that all of our residential occupancies have a working smoke detector. Few other things that we're going to be working on, really going to be focused, some of the work that my staff and I will be working on is, number one, obviously, is a big thing that we've been discussing for the past 10 years that you're well aware of, and that's the reimbursement of our EMS costs with Delaware County. Secondly, is our part-time program. It's been very successful since we've implemented that. One of the challenges that we're facing is getting higher, full-time as well as part-time personnel hired. It's not because of our process. It is dramatically decreasing the amount of people wanting to get, come into the fire service, and that's being seen throughout the state. One of the things that we're working closely with is with our Career Center and also the high school program within the Career Center. And our hope and anticipation is that we can work to have those personnel trained for our physical ability tests so that when they graduate from that program, they'll have their firefighter two card, they'll have their EMT card, they can move directly into the testing process here. We're also working to, with them, to also do ride-alongs with us so that we can really start having an influence on them and have some owner, they can have some ownership in our department as well. So that's one of the things that we'll get going this year or next year as well. Two other items is the replacement of the parking lot. At Station 302, located on Pittsburgh, the parking lot has really gotten bad, so we'll be replacing that. And also, the first of two phases is traffic prevention. We'll be working with our Public Works Department with that. So with that, there's two pictures. You can see, that was taken a couple weeks ago when we did have a little bit of snow on the ground. Since that period of time, the blacktop's been wrapped up, but it's coming along. They started to install a lot of the cabinetry and fixtures. The only thing that we're waiting for is the transformer to get done and we can have heat in the building, so. But again, thank you very much, and I'll entertain any questions that you may end up having.
Questions?
I have a couple operational metric questions here.
Okay.
I'm just surprised to see that, like, your EMS instance budgeted numbers coming down below where it has been. And actually, it's come down since 2016, despite 17, it came down. Wondering, you know, that's a bad thing, but why is that? I mean, as our population continues to grow, why are EMS incidents declining?
I think that has a lot to do with our social services coordinators working on that. One of the big things, if you remember, we were trying to take a more proactive look in our operations and how we can reduce the risk. So with that, we've hired and contracted with Council for Older Adults. We have an older 55 and an under 55. And these people are, those coordinators have worked to focus on our high-end users and done an excellent job in trying to curtail repeated calls that we go on. And we're still seeing an abundant amount of responses based on medical alarms as well as what we call lithocysts. That's becoming larger. But we're focusing on our top five people and highest demand people to try to see what services. So they're not always calling us for that type of service, and I think we've been very successful with that.
Is that also why, like, the number of medical transports is pretty much stayed level?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Chief, would that also be the, you have the Ford Explorer, you have the guys driving around, would that be counters on the EMS runs too?
That would still be considered an EMS run. What that does is help us curtail our costs instead of always sending one of the larger vehicles out. We would send this vehicle, that vehicle out instead.
Any questions?
Well, thank you, and again, appreciate all the assistance and support that we get from you.
Thank you. What are you doing next up? Ted?
So I was going to go through the four budgets and start with the Parks and Natural Resources.
Page number you start on?
I'll get, we're going to start on page 34. But again, I kind of read it with Chief, so we have a really good staff, and I just want to thank them for all the hard work they do and everything that we're able to get accomplished with them. About, we've got everybody on our staff here, and this does not include all the seasonals that we do, and that list definitely grows. So on page 34, this is the Parks and Recreation. One of the changes we're looking for this year is increasing seasonal staffing. We've not changed that for a while, so we're looking at upping that, and we're hoping that will help with some retention and getting some of the seasonal staff that we've had in the past to come back after summer. That's always a positive for us. We're also looking at transferring the full-time position of the Golf Course Superintendent to the Parks and Recreation Budget. Part of that is, well, in the wintertime, the golf course is closed, so he's in the, working in our park staff typically about three months out of the year. But we're also going to expand his duties, not really expand him, but kind of utilize some of his expertise in some of the turf management in our parks and also some of the aquatic management. We use a consultant to manage some of our ponds now, so we're going to utilize his skills in that regard also coming up in the future. The part-time, the permanent part-time position is something we're looking at reclassification to also increase the hourly rate. We've not been able to keep that position filled. We've just lost our, the current position. We have two part-time, permanent part-time positions. We're waiting to advertise for the one that we have unfilled, and meanwhile, we just lost our, the one that we did have filled. So we're thinking if we can increase that, that rate, we may, I'm working with Human Resources, that we may be able to retain that position a little bit better in the future. So we're looking at a little bit of changes there. Some of the project we're looking at in 2019 is the Heatherton Improvements. I know this keeps coming back around, but we do have a plan in place. We've got some improvements going on with Boulder Drive. We're going to continue off some of those improvements, but also move forward with some of the improvements in that park area in 2019. Ross Street Park Improvements, that's another meeting with, working with SWCI and some community groups. We're looking at implementing that master plan in 2019. We're also going to get some feedback from the community on that in 2019. We've got quite a bit, but I think with the new SWCI director, we're going to be able to move forward with that really well, so that's, looking forward to that. Just wanted to kind of give a brief update on some of the trail projects we're going to see in 2019. The Central Avenue, I think the official name now is Locust Curve Trail. That's the remaining link between Halk Road and Lexington Avenue. That, we're looking at design of that in 2019 and also looking to get some funding for that in 2019 to, for construction in 2020. The Broath Path, as it's infamously called, is something we want to move forward with also, and that one's going to take some, quite a bit of community input, particularly from some of the Pinecrest neighborhood area and the fairgrounds. We've got, we've got a lot of people we've got to meet, and that concept will probably change quite a bit to the final. The Stratford-Ole and TNG Trail, I think you've seen this before, but I know there's some in the Public Works Budget and possibly in Blake's that we're looking at getting some improvements done to that bridge out there, putting a railing on, the sewer bridge out there. And we want to kind of piggyback off that momentum and looking, extending that trail, and that'll be a joint project with Liberty Township because once we go underneath the bridge, it'll get in Liberty Township. So we're going to look at doing an application with them to hopefully get that funded for 2020 constructions in that range. Talking about the Central Avenue Trail, there's still a gap in there that you will see. We've completed that one section, but when Trapless Communities goes through, they will be also filling in that last final gap on there. So we haven't forgot about that gap, but it's in our plans. And also, we're going to move forward with the Delaware Run Greenway, kind of developing that vision for that greenway. We've got some community citizens that are very interested in that, so we're going to move that forward, and you'll see more about, more of that in the coming year.
Can I stop you before we move too far beyond?
Yes, absolutely.
I just have a question about that Golf Course Superintendent position.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the programmatic budget on page 67, and it's still showing one space there for 2019 for Golf Course Superintendent, but the wages are much less in 2019 or the personnel services. So are we still counting him as being there, but we moved his salary someplace else?
Not as complete, so we're doing a, I think it's $50,000 is going from, from the Golf Course budget to paid into the Parks and Recreation Budget?
Yeah, I was going to draw your attention to page 38 of the Golf Course Maintenance Fund. We had some discussion about this last year, how to represent it.
But to answer your question, that Golf Course Superintendent should be zero for 2019. That full-time position, you're correct, isn't being, as Ted said, isn't being assigned to the golf course. It should be in the Recreation Budget.
Or what?
The position will be paid for out of the Parks Budget as opposed to the Golf Course Budget. There's other full-time Parks people that do work at the golf course, and it's not just Chris or the superintendent, but it'll be budgeted and reflected in the Parks Budget. And then out of the, out of the Golf Course Budget, we're allocating a transfer back to the Parks Budget to pay for any of the full-time people. Ted's time, Stacy's time, Chris, who will still do some things out at the golf course to offset those costs.
And we still have cashiers, labors out at the golf course in the summer, seasonal staff.
So 100% of the Golf Course Superintendent's salary is out of the golf course?
But there's also the revenue from, coming from the golf course to the Parks and Recreation Budget. If that makes sense.
No.
We're transferring an amount coming out of the Golf Course Budget into the Parks Budget to offset those costs associated with the time that the Golf Course Superintendent is spending at the golf course.
Not just the Golf Course Superintendent. Historically, we've, we've tracked these costs, and it really wasn't reflective of what's actually occurring out there. There's more than just the Golf Course Superintendent that, as far as full-time staff that works at the golf course. So rather than take a proportionate piece, including of Chris's times, and try to divvy it up, all full-time staff are paid out of the Parks Budget. The seasonal people that do work exclusively at the golf course are going to be paid for out of the Golf Course Budget. The residual revenues, less the expenditures in the golf course, will be transferred back to the Golf Course Fund to help offset the cost of any of the full-time people, including who was previously Chris, who was the superintendent, and any of the other staff people that do do work at the golf course. It's not necessarily on a dollar-for-dollar basis, but that's the way that's going to be reflected moving forward.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we maintain the ability to look at the golf course and analyze.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to if we're going to take that out of there. For nine months of the year, if he works at the golf course, then it should come out of the golf course. And the wage and the income should come out of the golf course. The other three months that he's working over here in parks, then that's different. So how do we really know if that golf course is making money if it's not coming out of the golf course, it's coming out of parks?
One of the things, it's not going to be as much as in the past. In the past, Chris stayed down at the golf course. With what Ted's looking at doing is Chris won't necessarily be based at the golf course. His duties, he's going to be spending more time on the outfield and in some of the other areas where we have turf maintenance. The bulk of the work at the golf course will be done by seasonal and part-time staff. It's pretty much the way any other golf course of that stature operates. You're not going to go find a par-three course like that that has a full-time person all their time exclusively devoted to that golf course. So it's not just a change in how we account for it. I think it's going to be, as Ted indicates, a change in duties. Chris has skill sets outside just mowing grass at a golf course. So we're going to get him out into some other areas where he can use his expertise in our parks. Who knows, maybe at the cemetery, maybe at the swimming pool, maybe any number of other different places. That doesn't mean he still won't monitor and maintain the greens and take care of that golf course, but he doesn't need to physically be there nine months out of the year. And in doing that, it's, you know, what percentage, you know, we can track time and find out eventually how much time he actually spends at the golf course, but there'll be other staff people that may go down to the golf course and do something. We may assign one of our other lower-paid, full-time employees to go down there and just mow a fairway because that's, you know, that's who, you know, makes sense to allocate, so.
But who will be, like, in charge of the day-to-day operations?
Chris will still be in charge of that, but he's not going to spend all day at the golf course. Even in the summer times, he's not going to be down there all day. He's going to, he may be down there for the first two hours on a typical day and then be out doing other duties at other parks, but overseeing staff. But like you may say, we may send two seasonal staff down there to mow that day instead of Chris mowing that day or something like that.
Does his job title change?
He's still going to be the Golf Course Superintendent. We haven't talked about a job title change, but he'll still be the Golf Course Superintendent. That's probably something we could look at, though, since his duties are going to be past the Golf Course Superintendent, I mean, doing more than just that.
It just seems weird to say he's the Golf Course Superintendent, but no, not, not here. It's a zero for that position. Just doesn't.
But Lisa, you'd also ask the question, you hope it doesn't keep us from looking at the golf.
It just makes it a little bit harder because it's kind of like a shell game with the money in terms of what are we?
I guess we were finding every year that, that reflecting it as 100%, having the golf course picked it up as 100% wasn't reflective necessarily of that. And also looking at it and saying, we do need to figure out a way to hopefully balance that operation a little more. So taking advantage of his skill sets within the park system, but still having responsibility to the golf course was what we were trying to do here. I mean, it's imperfect, but how many times have we sat here and said the golf course is losing money? And it is a park, just like all, you know, our other parks lose money technically as well. But here was at least a way to try to take advantage of his skill sets and more accurately represent how we're going to allocate his time between the park system at large and the golf course. And if that, if that requires revisiting the job duties in terms of Golf Course Superintendent to Park Superintendent perhaps, but we hadn't gotten that far.
Okay. And I don't think we're going to lose track with the amount of hours. I mean, we're going to still be able to track his time, where he's spending his time, like, is it in the parks in the summertime? Does he spend 80% of his time at the golf course or where he's spending that time? We will still be able to track that even in the summer. But like, in the wintertime when the golf course is closed, we know he's not down there.
So then, in the actual, we don't have 2018 actual budget numbers for the revenues at the golf course because we don't have them yet? Is that why that's all blank on page 68?
Are you in the programmatic?
68, the programmatic.
Yeah.
Probably. Yeah, I think we just finished up in November because we were open in November still, and we just finished up in November, so those numbers will be.
We can tell you, though, the year was not, I mean, it's.
No, if you look at page 38 in the line item budget, there it has revenues for 2018, and I projected them through the remainder of the year.
Yeah, most of the summer, we were tracking, per the last quarterly report, we were tracking probably about $7,000, $8,000 less than the previous year. And a lot of that we can attribute to, I think we were closed 15 days this summer as opposed, we had 15 less days of operation than we did last year.
So we're guessing that to be $160,000?
Yeah.
Looking at that correctly?
What page are you on, Lisa?
38.
38.
38.
Yes, the 2018 projected is 164, 36, although we had warm weekend, warm weather this weekend. Did you?
We weren't open this week. We close typically, leading up to Thanksgiving is usually our last day.
So if we were still calculating things out the way that we used to, this would be highlighting another, like, another year of a big problem with development.
Yeah, because you're, because so much of that expense is tied up in that, in that Golf Course Superintendent's position.
This is involved, and we say this each year, that the position, the full-time position, if we were to account for this, it's not a shell game. If we were to account for this the way we should be accounting for it, we would do it this way. Years ago, what was considered the person at the full-time, because it wasn't a superintendent, this person Gerard Smith, he worked out there, and he was there most of the year and he was off, and it wasn't as substantial of a cost. Chris's roles changed and, for whatever reason, he's paid. If you look at just the cost of Chris for his full-time wages and benefits, you know, it's 2/3 of the cost. Nobody would operate a golf course, a small par-three golf course like that. It's like putting out a putt-putt golf course and then hiring a full-time person with full benefits to run it. It's just kind of each year, we just kind of kept that there because he spends the majority of his time. So I think properly accounting for his time, whether it's his or anybody else, is what we should be able to do, especially with our time tracking, is we should be able to say, what personnel hours are used out there at the golf course, Chris's or anybody else's? And then we can look at that and say, here's the cost of maintaining that golf course and attach it to whoever's working out there. As Ted said, I think, you know, at least with Chris and his current role, we can utilize his skill sets in other parks. And so even during the season, I think, moving him out and having him responsible for other duties is what he's proposing doing moving forward.
What is the Golf Course Superintendent position? What does that cost per year?
He is.
It's here, pretty quick.
Golf course.
With benefits.
102.
It is $102,576.
Yeah. The base wage of that is $62,000.
And nobody's going to operate a, you know, small little thing like that that has $160,000 in revenue and pay 2/3 of it to, and it's not necessarily, you know, it's. I think this more accurately reflects, and it'll enable us, and we're not going to lose that capability. I think what we can bring into next year, next year's budget, is to sit back and say, what maintenance hours were incurred at the golf course? Cashiers, everybody, mowers, who all that is, and what were those hours and what was that cost to us? And that's what we can reflect in the Parks Golf Course Budget. We'll still probably budget some of these people's time, whether it be Chris or Ted's or Stacy's out of the Parks Fund, but then we'll, because I don't want to have, you know, all kind of different funds with personnel costs in it for the same person, but then we'll allocate that back to those, you know, to that, to that Parks Fund where they're paid out of.
Okay.
I'm trying to share and see what it looks like next year, what the fellow can do.
I think we have to take a look at, right?
Yeah, and we'll track those hours and see where, you know, if he's, and then it'll allow us to make adjustments, too, if we sees he may need to spend more hours out in the parks than he is at the golf course in coming 20 year, in that 2019.
And at some point, it has to be managed. If there's not a role, then we have to come to that conclusion, but like I said, to pay that much, you know, I think Ted's going to look at it in 2019 and see whether there's, as he mentioned, we won't have to hire some consultants to do some of the work, should be able to justify that type of individual in the park system, not just exclusively at the golf course.
Could we get an update to the page 68 in the programmatic budget?
Update on the.
Just using the 2018 actual numbers so that we're able to get a good picture?
I think that, that was a question, Dean, maybe you could address this, on differences between the programmatic or actuals have to be.
One of the things that you're going to see in some of these programmatic budgets, it's extremely difficult to come in mid-year and try to look at these cost allocations amongst services because we don't account for things that way. We can put together a 2019 budget projection of the department's. We can put together a 2019 budget projection and the departments can work on that and they can say, here's what our proposed budget is for 2019 and here's how I think it'll break down by our service levels. We're going to spend 20% of our time in the planning department on zoning reviews or whatever it is, and they can allocate those costs. Coming back mid-year and trying to look at actual numbers and match them up is difficult to do. So you're not going to see, you know, you might see in several of the programmatic budgets the 2018 line, our column that says actual, some of them may not tie back in and they may not have all the numbers. If you want to see line item, the line item budgets do have projections through the remainder of the year. It's just the outcome, the service-based type of stuff that doesn't have the projections for 2018. And I can say too, that's a little bit of the challenge in using this sort of format. Once the year is over, you know, departments are moving on into their 2010, next year, to go back and look at actual cost and try to do that. It takes that next step, which we're not quite there yet of involvement, a lot, lot more accounting, either at a department level or some other, some other means. One of the things we're looking at with our software change is being able to account for expenditures in two different ways. One, based on the line items, if it's an operating supply, you charge it to an operating supply line item. The other is that it has to be broken down by the services. And then we might have that means to have, you know, at this time next year, numbers for the current year, but short of that, it's kind of an accounting challenge that I don't think we're going to be able to do.
Yeah, I think last year when we were sitting here talking about these, I think there was almost, almost a $15,000 deficit. And then when the actuals came in, you could see it dropped down to about 2,000. Because we, last year when we had this conversation, it was, the budget was a lot larger than 2,000. So like, like you were saying, once the actual numbers come in and all the POs are closed, that, that number, you know, we get the true number at that point.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that our, the difference between the revenue and the expenditures is getting bigger.
In the golf course?
Yeah. I mean, it's been a fund that's been under a high level of scrutiny.
I think that was part of our recognition this year was trying to address that. And this was one, this was one attempt to do that. I think we'll have to give it a year and see how it works and evaluate, evaluate it this time next year, but.
Because if we were still calculating that salary in the golf course budget, we would be into a negative fund balance situation.
Typically, yeah, and that's where we've been in the past. And what we focus on is should the golf, that's, you start with the premise that the golf course should be making money and that's not necessarily the premise. If you start with that premise, yeah, we got problems, but it's a park operation, not unlike our pool and not unlike other, other, well, pool is probably the only other example of that, but none of our parks make money, but it does generate revenue and, you know, that was, that was our dilemma, Lisa, was try to, try to address what is, comes up every year, which is the golf course is losing money, what are we doing about it? Well, your largest cost center is your superintendent, so perhaps allocating some of those costs within the park and taking advantage of his abilities might be one way to address that. But I think we're going to have to see it, that you're going to have to monitor it.
Right, and show us.
Know what you think at the end of the year.
I just don't want to hide the problem by pushing.
No, I think we're going to show the truer allocation of where his time is, especially if we move his, some of his time out into the parks also. But again, I think we looked at the other, if this was just turned, if the golf course was turned into a park, we'd spend more money on the maintenance of that as a park itself without any revenue coming in, rest of shelters.
I mean, it is one of the most, people value that course. They get a lot of positive feedback about that course. It's an easy course to play, it's very accessible, it's affordable, it's a good part of our system, but yeah.
Well, and this hopefully is going to account for correctly. Of all our recreational opportunities, this one probably comes closer than any of them to covering your cost. We haven't been accounting for it because we can, allocating a cost that's exorbitant considering what's there. And so we'll get accurate numbers, who knows? At the end of the day, next year, when we look at actual person time out there, we add that up and we compare it to the revenues and other costs, we still may be short a little bit. But like I said, that's a policy issue. Hardly any of our recreational opportunities come close. Some of them don't have any revenue generated. This one is fairly close and if you want to make the policy decision, it's not as much as easy as saying raise the rates per se, but because sometimes that may have an impact on people playing, but we can, we can at least have that discussion with a lot better accounting of what true costs are out there.
Any other questions on that? I'll move on to urban forestry, page 36. We have no adjustments in staffing and some of the items we're looking at this year is completing our urban forestry management plan, which will allow us to, you know, gauge our urban canopy and also kind of project out some of those costs and, you know, some of the vision and goals we want to take on. We're also working with our shade tree commission to increase our public outreach and hopefully you'll, well, you will start seeing some Instagram pages and just some, some more outreach with our shade tree commission to, you know, educate citizens on, you know, some of the, the knowledge that our shade tree commission does have. So that's some of our goals in 2019, but other than that, there's no real big changes there. On page 38, I think we kind of talked about it a little bit, was the Hidden Valley Golf Course, the change there. We are going to begin alcohol sales. I just checked with our permit, it's still being, they're going to resend, they, they need to send out a few more forms from the state level to get that, but we're on track for 2019 of that. We're also going to review our equipment replacement plan.
It never happened all summer?
No, we did not get the application back from the state yet. They still have one more form they have to resend out today, according to them, because I just checked again today.
When did you submit it?
I think all the forms, well, we were submitting forms most of the summer, but sometimes forms, and they tell you there's a six-week turnaround minimum. I think that's assumed to be a minimum.
Did that back in April?
Yeah, but I think in, by the time we got all our forms in, I think we had one set in June and, and yeah, but we never had got the official permit from the state yet. It's a process. We're going to review our equipment replacement plan because that is something we think we can, you know, save some money on and possibly consolidating some of our equipment and, and trying to be more efficient there. Any questions on, or Sarah? The text got a little small, but on page 40, Oak Grove Cemetery, again, one of the changes we're looking at increasing the seasonal staffing, that, that's going to be consistent across the board there. We're looking at finalizing the cemetery master plan and implementing some of those changes in 2019. I know there's been some, we've, there's been some talk about the markers out there and, and we have addressed that over the, since the city took over that. And I know we've had over more than 200 markers and foundations have been replaced, so we will continue to address that. And that is being addressed in the cemetery master plan also. So we're going to be, begin cleaning up the Liberty Road entrance. We've already started moving some, some of those piles in the back out of there, so that's another hot topic in 2019 we want to move forward on. And removing of the existing house. And then the stormwater, that one photo in the middle, you can see, we have some, some issues with stormwater coming down through there, so we do want to address that also in 2019.
Did you say removing the house?
Yes, that was.
That's what's being recommended.
That's being recommended.
Ultimately, we've got to, once that plan gets complete, we've got to bring it back to city council and get your input on some of those recommendations. It's actually a lot of significant changes.
Yeah, we'll be bringing the draft master plan to council and that would be the next step.
The Liberty Street gate, was that, when was that open to the park?
I'd have to look that up. I don't know, not sure.
That came up, I think that was one of the, there was a very long thread last week on Facebook regarding.
The appearance?
Yeah, and I think it follows the news report that was.
Has there been a lot of vandalism lately? And I got an email, I think it should have gone to Carolyn Ringley, they sent it to Carolyn Ringley and I forwarded to Lee and you took care of it from there, but has there been a lot of vandalism lately?
No, a lot of vandalism, no. We haven't had a lot of vandalism, it's just we have a lot of old markers in there and it's a continual maintenance task to go through and fix a lot of those markers and foundations. It's not just the marker above ground, there's the foundations that need to be updated also.
There was several years ago, there was a lot, there was a big, somebody came in, those really old stones, pretty fragile, somebody, they came in and just cracked them. And there's just not a lot, you get two of that, I mean, other than laying them on the ground, it's too bad, but occasionally there's some vandalism out there every once in a while, but.
Yeah, we haven't had any major incidents of vandalism.
Couple of years ago, there was, some of those markers are actually made out of a metal material that it looks like it's stone, but they were, they were done like in early 20th century and people were actually taking that and salvaging the metal. Hard to believe, but they were going in, they could tell which ones were and they were taking it and selling, trying to scrap it and make money from it.
And the only update, other update I want to do is on the facility's income tax on page 80. We are, in 2018, we are, we are still completing some of the, highlight some of the projects that we have completed and they're not, a lot of them aren't flashy projects, but they're necessary products, projects for ongoing functionality of these buildings, especially the Mingo facility. There's our heating system in there that was just replaced and that was a, that was a huge, I think it was way overdue, but that system being replaced is going to be a big, I think there was concerns about even some carbon dioxide because that heating system was so old. So we were, I think, getting that replaced was just huge and I, that's, that was very helpful. 2019, we have some.
Heating and air conditioning?
Well, we just did a heating system in the gym, no air conditioning in the gym. Our air conditioning was the fans. Yep, the fans were up, replaced and updated, so that's our air conditioning is the fans. But the Mingo, the Hillburn room will have an HVAC system also, heating and air conditioning. And that's being replaced also. There, those, both those units were 20 plus years old, so. Yeah, and some of the updates with some new signage, the drinking fountain, just, just basic, basic, where this equipment had worn out and just replacing that equipment. And I think it'll make a big difference on our existing buildings, not necessarily getting new, but just replacing and repairing what we have. So if there's any other questions, I can answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity here. All right, there we go. Hopefully it's all legible. I am going to try and keep it simple. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any point. Let's get going. We'll start with the storm sewer, that is on page 42. So there are no requested changes in personnel for this budget, just to highlight, can I do this thing? Oh, it does. Just to highlight a couple of the projects, we have Bernard Avenue and Birch Terrace projects planned for 2019. These are just areas of deficiency within stormwater conveyance. We're looking to improve the areas and get them flowing better. Birch Terrace is, you're not going to find a Birch Terrace street. I don't know why the project was lovingly dubbed Birch Terrace 10 years ago in the CIP planning model, but it is, it's, you've got right here, you've got Birch Bend and that's all the birch there is, that whole area, but it's addressing pretty much everything you can see in that window there, that entire area is being brought up to a better flowing standard. And then Bernard Avenue, this is actually the second phase of the work there. The first phase was done in 2016, just fixing the downstream. That way, when we do this upstream stuff, it can continue all the way out to the river. So this is the second and final part of this work to get that area completely going. I'm not, I'm not sure if Ted addressed Hunter Pine and Crest slope at all. So coming up, Pine Crest Drive right off of 23 there, I'm sure you've all been by that during a rainstorm. If you can see in that picture right there, that's some of the, the stone and silt and everything that's being washed down every time it rains. And I got out of my car one day and took that picture. It's a travesty, what is, what is flowing off that hill and into the, to the grate. So that, that's a joint project. It's, Ted's crews are going to help with the stripping of that hillside and then it's going to be put back in proper. It seems like it was just done wrong from day one. What was allowed to go in there by the developer was not proper. It didn't allow for correct vegetative growth on the hillside and has since washed it all away. So we're going to, we're going to replace it and what, what is deemed to be the way for it is we're just going to maintain that, as in it's not going to be mowed. It's going to be, it's still their land, but it's not longer to be mowed, it's going to be allowed to grow and hold itself together. And that's, any questions on storm?
Just want to mention the, I mentioned in my budget message, the consultant's report that we received regarding the rates that we currently charge and taking a look at whether the rates need to be adjusted upwards to generate additional dollars for capital projects. So that'll be another discussion. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
I'll say that we had a decently well-attended local area directors meeting on Friday morning. I was specifically talking with the Marysville Director of Utilities, Mike, and asked him that question. He said their storm sewer rate is increased every three years at a minimum. He kind of couldn't believe that we had gone 20 years without an increase. They're at seven something in the ERU at the moment. He's not sure how we get things done, but you work within what you have is the simple message. But it is time for an increase. We're not going up to $7 something per person. I think this is a good step in continuing to get these large-scale projects going or completed. Phase one of Bernard, for example, in 2016 was $600,000. The next phase is going to be $400,000. These, these are big projects and costs are only going straight up. So I think that's a good topic to touch on. Thank you.
So what do you think they should go up?
They recommended between 275 and 337, I think, depending, there's a couple of scenarios they showed us in terms of depending on how aggressive we were with our, with our capital, our capital improvement program. So it's a, some of it's a function of the kind of work that we can get done. So that's what we'll try to review with you, but it has, it's been a very successful program, but we have, we have increased it now.
Can we do it over like a three-year time instead of just boom, here it is?
Well, it's 250 a month, right?
Right. But to go up three something.
Right.
They're going to blow a gasket. So we just do it gradually and show them what we're going to do with them.
You can do that like a three-year, like we did with the water rates.
Right.
Yeah. That's an option, definitely.
Would you, would, would you be, so I would say that this is something we're going to have to address more often though, is more regular increases, so.
Right.
If they were.
Twenty years and then.
Right, so instead of three years to get 25 cents or more cents introduced right now, do we just start setting up a program for these semi-annual reviews of how much we should be going up, you know, if it's a factor of inflation or if it's a factor of growth for the city?
Just for the conversation, I was just.
Sure. No, I'm.
Throw that out there.
Continuing it with you.
Okay.
Moving on, yes. Okay, next would be the water treatment, that is page 49. Again, we have no staffing changes budgeted and I did just, I kind of wanted to highlight out of, you know, the water plant takes a lot of money to run, but just the electricity and chemical supplies alone are 66% of the water plant's entire budget. That is, that is, I did take out personnel wages out of that, but just running the plant. So that's 66% of the budget and so you can, you can see how quickly you can fill out a budget when.
That's why you need solar panels.
Working on it.
Say it one more year.
They, they can't go there, but I am working on it. That is all a flood zone and I have, I have looked at that, so I promise, I'm working on it.
They don't have to go on the ground.
Agreed, but I, talking with all of the solar consultants, all the equipment that comes off of those, et cetera, they just, they won't install in a, in a flood zone. I did ask the question though.
On top of the building? You place the roof?
Maybe, maybe.
I know, there's a lot of trees out there, but there's, there's got to be some way to do it to help offset that electric.
I'm with you. We are working heavily on quite a few things. I had a meeting last week with Ohio Wesleyan and Heapy Engineering, just talking about the, the chances of microgrid installations between the two of us. And then I'm also, we've been doing some solar feasibility studies on our, the lands we do have. It looks like the property near Armstrong Road is a good place, feasible place. And it's not too far, you know, just shooting across the river to get back to the wastewater plant. Anywhere we can offset, even if we're just taking those solar credits and splitting them between the plants, it doesn't matter if it's onsite or not. So, and I'm working on our SolSmart accreditation right now, so these are all wheels that are in motion. Yes, you're welcome. Projects at the plant this year, we have got a South River intake. We're replacing the pump with VFD pumps. When the water plant was upgraded, only the North intake pumps were upgraded to VFD equipment. Very, I'm sorry, variable frequency drives. So a drive is either running at a fixed rate or it's allowed to fluctuate up and down in its speed. So the variable frequency allows the pump to travel along different speeds and different amounts of water that it's pushing. The new membrane treatment system can't work with the existing static speed pumps. So we have only been running off of our North intake. It was originally designed to have both done at time, but value engineering brought it back with plans to do the South intake at a later date. This is the later date, so now we're going to bring the redundancy of both river intakes back online, back into the treatment system. It's a good project to get done and have us going forward. Penery Road well cleaning, these, this is a annual, not annual, it's every five years, the wells need cleaned. This is just a cleaning out, you can see the two sides, the picture's there, that is down in a well casing. So what you have is minerals just build up within the well casing and within the rocks themselves down in the aquifer. And if you do not treat these semi-regularly, they will permanently harden, and you can never get that flow back, at which time you have to drill new wells. And that's not a route we want to try going down. The wells we have were hard enough to obtain as it was.
Those are our, that's our groundwater sources.
Correct. Any questions on water treatment? So for water distribution, we again have no staffing changes budgeted, but our operating budget will be increasing by 1.9%, and this is solely a result of supplier pricing going up, whether it be piping, valves, et cetera. The price of metals, copper, et cetera, has driven this. These are just communications between our suppliers and us, and following the rates of all of that. A big, very big project for the next year is the West Water Tank Painting. This is the tank at the intersection of London and Pittsburgh Drive. It is, it is a required step of maintenance. This used to be what was highly observed by reporting in news agencies in years past. Before Flint, Michigan, this is what the news reporters would call and ask if you were keeping up on, before other things took the limelight. So what this involves is the entire structure being sandblasted, fixed where needed and repainted. It's expected last 15 to 19 years, every time it's done. The last one was in 2001, so we're there. It's time to, for this tank to be done. And then a couple other, last time this tank was painted, another one was done at the same time. So we have a small little bit of incremental repairs being done to another one, just to let it last another five years. That way, we can start spreading these out to a more appropriate timeframe between them. And then for the East Williams Street widening, obviously, that's not our project, but there are a number of utilities that are being moved in that project, so this is just our portion. We're pitching in our portion to make sure this project goes smoothly for the city.
Does it compare with the same color? I'm just curious.
You know what, that's, that's going to be a decision we can all make together.
Since that painting, we've adopted our brand, so the question will be, will it, is it something like that? Is it a D or is it a, that's something that?
I'm going to let every one of you pick. I'm going to give you a slip of paper and let you vote on it. Okay.
It's going to be pink, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
That would be, that would be attention grabbing.
Oh, I don't know if my budget's ready for that. Wastewater Treatment, page 55 in your books. So we don't have new people coming on necessarily, but I do have a number of people moving around in the organizational structure. We have, one of our current Class 3s will be moving to the position of wastewater manager. And then two of our Class 1s are expected to receive their Class 2 certifications this year. They, as far as the Class 1s, they are always able to take the EPA testing whenever they feel so prepared. I think that they, we are confident that they're actually going to, two of them are going to do that this year and move themselves up fairly soon. That has been shown in the budget. Equalization basin would be that first picture on the bottom left. The basin itself has started to suffer pretty decent cracking and concrete damage just from settlement underneath the concrete. And it, you know, it's a structure full of water through freeze fall cycles, et cetera. It sees its fair share of abuse, so we're having a contractor come in and paint an elastometric, math, elastom-
Can you help me out here, Bill?
There you go, elastomeric, basically rubberized compound over it. It's going to seal up the cracks, the larger cracks will be sealed prior to the painting with an even heavier amount of caulking, but just sealing the whole thing up, get a lot more life out of the basin. It's an important part of the treatment process, especially during heavy storm floods or flows. What it does is it actually allows us to put water into that when we're getting more water than we can treat, hold it there, and then start blending it back in when flows have gone down to normal operating levels. Again, and then, again, touching on variable frequency drives, the plant's affluent pump drives have reached the end of their useful life. Even the manufacturer has suggested it is time. We've begun having difficulties finding repair parts for these drives. We have trouble fixing them, et cetera. At the moment, we scavenge parts from older discarded things we already have onsite, but we're running out of that availability as well. So it is time to begin the phase approach. We have three of them. Over the next three years, we're going to replace one each year to get that accomplished.
When you said freeze thaw, you're talking the water or the concrete around it? Because isn't there pumps in there that that water constantly moves?
So, but with that much water, we do get water in this, so it's a tank with banks up. The water gets down underneath on the inside ground. And so you actually get a lot of popping around the top, there's a sidewalk around the top, and that starts popping out.
It's not the water itself that freezes because it's constantly moving.
Correct, yep. Good question, I guess I should have.
That's okay.
And then, lastly, I have collections, page 57. For collections, our big push this year is going to be I and I treatment. The largest offender that we have found through stormwater monitoring is the haze colony area. That, so we will go in there, there's, we have 1,935 linear foot of pipe that needs repaired in their slip lining and routing, yeah, it's a pretty bad area, and we found it to be a very big contributor to our storm flows when it rains at the wastewater plant. So that'll, that'll be done. That was a big enough project not to fit into the, to the regular I and I yearly fund. And then we also have a new backhoe that is going to the collections crew and the storm. Their contributions are reflective of how often our equipment is used between the two items. That existing piece of equipment will be going to the water plant. They're having trouble at the moment with large chemical deliveries, getting them to where they need to be. That'll help them out in that process. All I have for that one, I did not think to make a thank you slide, but I thank you. And if you have any questions.
I know this Saturday with all the rain driving up Central, and I know we're just been reeking their leaves, but I just not, could not believe how quickly that one flooded. But as I'm driving past, I see everybody's little, drain toll that were just full of leaves. It's so frustrating.
It's the wrong time of year, yeah.
Despite the tweets and the Facebook posts and everything else.
It's so frustrating.
I agree.
So in my budget message on page six, I reference water rates. They have to be, should be adjusted, so that'll be the subject of a conversation with city council so that we can get that legislation before you, beginning of the year. So we haven't, they were last increased in, well, last year, '17. But the water plant, as Blake's indicated, that's where we just have more, got more costs over there, so that's-
So how much do we think in there?
I think we had indicated increase between three and six percent. Just rough calculations, but again, that's going to be a, something we need to, obviously, you're looking at refuse as well because of the situation with recycling.
But unfortunately, when somebody gets that bill, it's their water bill. It's not their water bill, their storm and their- It's a bill. So you're talking about all three going off. They don't care, it's their water bill. So I think we just have to be cautious as to what we're doing.
To the city's benefit, my monthly bill for every city service is less than my electric bill, so. Maybe I just have the wrong equipment at home, but, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hughes?
Good evening. It's time for a simple budget. I don't have any variable frequency drives. I wish I did though, maybe I don't.
No, they'd just be failing.
That's right, they'd fail all the time. All right. My line item budgets are on pages nine and 10, programmatic on nine through 12. I just wanted to start with some accomplishments, some metrics for 2018. This has been an incredibly busy year for our small ED staff. You can see there, we hit 250, or I'm projecting that we'll be at 254 business attraction projects this year. Our goal for next year, I'm setting at 266, which is very aggressive. If you add the 254 to the 94 business retention expansion projects that we also managed, I mean, that's a total of 348 projects for two people for the year. Is that, and we had in comparison, 311 projects in the previous year. So an impressive, increase, basically an amount between the two years there. In addition, where those 94 BRE projects typically come from is the 130 visits that we have with existing businesses to make sure that they're getting the services they need from the city that we're able to help them problem solve from a variety, for a variety of things, from workforce issues to, you know, policy issues to education training issues, you name it. We're there to be part of their team and create solutions to their problems, shipping, transportation, you name it. So out of that, 254 projects, we're projected to hit 26 new businesses this year. We had 17 last year. So the, I'm projecting the number of jobs coming from that to be almost identical. It's going to be about the 230 range, new jobs with a primary, about 77% of those being from Target Industries though, which is a little bit higher than last year. And the payroll from Target Industries will be about 85% of total payroll. So I'm thinking that the, from Target Industries, the average payroll this year will be about $60,000 per year. So it's a little bit higher than last year, and it's actually a little bit higher than the region. The region's usually around 50, 55 to 59 typically. So we're keeping pace there and actually accelerating that. And you can see there, from a business attraction standpoint, Columbus 2020, our project senior project manager there recently said, "We've conducted more site visits than any community in Columbus region." That's huge for Delaware. Unfortunately, we have a product issue. And a lot of people do, but I think ours is a little more significant than most. So we conduct a lot of site visits, but obviously, turning those, converting those into wins will continue to be a challenge for us if we don't have proper product. And the reasons for, you know, us not getting wins are typically workforce-related and pad readiness. What we consider pad-ready might not be what a company considers pad-ready, or might be pad-ready at all. So however, I mean, even with that, you can see Wallet Hub there, we are ranked number four in the state for employment growth. That's significant because if you look at number two there, they were recognized nationally for their economic development efforts, Fairborn, Ohio. So we're number four, we're just behind them in employment growth. And obviously, that's a calculation based on your, your working age population growth too. How's that growing in comparison to your job growth? So we're doing very well in that metric. We had 10 successful retention expansion projects this year, nine last year. Those are, we only count those if they lead to job creation. We had many more than 10. We help a lot of companies out of those 130 visits and 94 projects. But I only count those as successful projects that actually do lead to new jobs. All right, so on to minor budget changes. Mid Ohio Development Exchange Mode is the professional organization that we, I belong to. They, our dues primarily for that go towards our services to Columbus 2020. It's a way for us collectively as communities in the region to pool our money and pay Columbus 2020 for our services, their services, and also get a seat at the board directors for Columbus 2020. Normally, you wouldn't get that as a small community paying in. So it's, it's ability for us to get a person on that board of directors and to be able to push the agenda and the strategy, regional strategy for economic development. So that went up by $1,813. Those were planned increases over a course of a number of years. Columbus 2020 always wants more money, so we have to continue to try and keep pace with that. Most of our other organizational dues went up very slightly this year as those organizations are growing. And I did move our SEMA membership, which I normally had put under marketing, up under, in professional development, up under our membership and dues this year, since it really is. But I was killing that as marketing in previous years because it was something new. We were trying to get more traction from that particular industry sector. The other increases that we saw this year, I built in for our incentive programs, our income tax sharing line I am there, 3% increases for our commitments to HP Donatar and Skyclimber Fabricating. Those are our school compensation agreements. So the money that we owe through those to those companies based on those old projects, I'm projecting those, those companies' payrolls will probably go up around 3%. And then our amount paid off to the school districts will be 3% more. The EMS payment fortunately is a locked-in value, we negotiated that as such, so that will always stay the same for the life of their CRA agreement, yay. And I also put another $30,000 in there for any types of performance-based economic incentive grant programs that we want to put in place this year for new companies. And that's really it for that. Some other budget changes, you see in professional services. We, next year, 2019, will be the first of our five payments towards the Entrepreneurial Center. Those are $50,000 per year. That center is already doing well, performing. We have to build a lot of programming going forward. But there's already two tenants in the facility, two companies, and we're working on a third right now that's going to finalize hopefully soon. And this, next year, I'm hoping that we'll be able to occupy our offices and the facility to help with the programming and, and with those companies. And also occupy staff, our offices that will be provided to us in Cohatch Facility. Both facilities, I think, also provide us some really great opportunities to have very professional office space and conference areas to meet with companies as they come in for business retention expansion and for attraction. Typically, as I was telling Tom, we try to organize those meetings all over, including the chamber, and I can't tell you how many I had at Engineered Material Systems and their- And I can't tell you how many I had at Engineered Material Systems in their conference room, which is very gracious of Todd. But this will give us a facility where we can be very, we can have pride in, in the presentation that we put for, for the city of Delaware. And I believe that is it. That is my thank you slide. I thank you very much for the support you've given our, our team and, and the years I've been here. And we look forward to moving, continuing to move forward our economic development strategies with you as a team.
Any questions, Sean?
Thank you. How, how much, how much time was that? There, there's supposed to be timing.
Nine minutes.
Nine minutes. Wow. Bill said they had two minutes and 30 seconds, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Even number, mayor, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight to go through maybe even a quicker budget presentation than Sean. We do have variable. I know, variable frequency drives, we call them human assets and planning. For all the different things we do every day, you get a sense of it on the screen. And of course, you guys feel this with some regularity with development cases and other things that come before you. But Delaware Together, our comprehensive plan, of course, we won great places in Ohio from APA Ohio. We have experienced a tremendous amount of construction this year. And our facade program, here the hamburger end, maybe the, maybe the crown jewel facade program in terms of the physical look of, transformation of the look is set to top $1 million of combined investment in 2019 between public and private sector. So that's exciting. I do a little development update for you every year. I'm going to do it very, very briefly tonight because it's in the city manager's write-up every year. And it is budget message, and we try to keep you updated on that with regularity. Again, you felt a lot of that development in some controversial cases this year as well. But our population is closing in on 41,000, we estimate. And that estimate is getting closer to reality as the time to complete a house is getting shorter and shorter and occupy that house. So we're usually talk about that as a leading indicator based on building permits. But that lead times getting a little bit shorter as the market remains strong. It, it'll be our highest residential permit year in the last decade, the fourth highest ever. Pretty significant, and I think what we've all felt during this, the course of this year. Over 300 new single family permits and over 450 total residential permits. Commercial permits remain strong, even though the commercial market is a little kind of dicey overall, trying to figure its way through Amazon and the rest of it. But that's the seventh straight year over 200 new commercial permits. And not all of Sean's projects are retail commercial, or are industrial, but you see that reflected in some of his creation numbers as well. Our population growth since 2010, you can just kind of see the pie chart that in 2018, that represents 21% of the growth since 2010. It's just this year. And of course, we're not done with this year yet. So we anticipate a strong year in 2019. Probably not quite as strong as this year for a variety of reasons that were contained again in the manager's report to you. But still a very strong year in 2019 and probably 2020 as well, pending macro conditions. A lot of words on this slide, but you know them all pretty much already. Our budget reflects no personnel changes. It does reflect the increase for the inspectors and I think payout for retiring inspector as well. So that's some of the difference that you're seeing there, but you're seeing the full year reflected in the budget, obviously. We want to expand the use of technology. We do have a number in there to allow iPads with rugged cases for our field personnel, code enforcement and inspectors to take out in the field. We've been doing some test piloting of that. We think there's some real efficiencies using CityWorks with respect to that and joining our, our fellow employees and public works, public utilities primarily and public works who have, who have begun that process in earnest as well. Staff is excited about that opportunity just from the efficiency of being able to do their, focus on their jobs more and the paperwork less. Of course, our Delaware Together Comprehensive Plan process continues. We've been spending a lot of work and a lot of time with our 31 person steering committee in that. Another meeting is coming up December 13th. So you're all invited and please feel free to attend. This one is going to be a good one as well. And then we'll have some period of time where we need to do a lot more analytical work over the holidays and into the early part of the year and reflect on the feedback that we've found. And then of course, we're slated to move next door to the city hall annex, which is exciting. I remember when I was being hired by Tom, he mentioned that we might be moving to the Ross Street facility at that time. I wasn't as excited about that as I am about moving next door, to be, to be honest with you. Just because of the physical facility next door, as it's coming together, is going to reflect very well on the city and for our community and provide a lot better service for our citizens and frankly, provide a much better work environment for our employees as well. So we're excited by that. And of course, it frees up space here in city hall to talk about doing other things. And then just sort of a laundry list of some of the developments for you that I think sometimes we don't step back, take stock of this a little bit, but there's a start of a number of developments in earnest or the, the true start of them anticipated. And you can read them for yourself, the continuation of a number of them. But I think of note, in 2019, we would anticipate the build out of Bra Miller Estate subdivision, Bra Miller Woods subdivision, Heatherton subdivision, Curtis Farm subdivision, and Old Colony Estates subdivision. So even as we're thinking that we're, we're having all this growth, which we are, and we're kind of chugging through the pipeline, the housing pipeline, so to speak. Those are, that, that is, that would be a significant year to see that many subdivisions close out. And of course, we have some new ones coming into the pipeline, but primarily we're still working our way through a pipeline that went through a great recession and housing crisis and some other things. Terrell, Rogers piece, Stockdale will be the next large, significant chunk that's really slated to get off the ground. And then I anticipate some additional growth due to central Ohio growth and due to the demand for our community. And why wouldn't people want to move here? It's a great community.
Especially after this weekend.
Especially after this weekend. I did not do a thank you slide, but I thank you all for your support as always through, through everything. And through the controversial cases, I know that's difficult for everybody in our community, but I, I'm confident that you all make the decisions that are best for our community and we move forward from there. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey Dave, I have a question.
Okay. Of course.
Of course. The single family homes in 2019. Do, do you have the data on mean median price on single family homes build out in 2019? And do we have that on a year to year basis?
We, yeah, we, we rely on the census primarily for that information. There are other data sources and one of our sub consultants in our comprehensive plan provided a lot of data in that respect at the last steering committee meeting, which I believe is available to all you. I certainly can, can get it for you. I don't have a citywide number for you and it would vary a little bit between the Delaware City School District and the Olentani District as well. It is, it, it has been coming up in reviewing that number from the consultant. He's a little slightly different data source than the census, kind of a blend. And that's due to some of our subdivisions are producing higher cost homes than they have in the past 10 years or so. In addition to the fact that labor and construction costs are rising significantly. So at a certain point, you just can't build a house under a certain value without grants or aid or some other source. But we could try to work to get that number for you.
Curious to know, what, what is the current average single family home cost per square foot? Where's that around 160?
Be honest with the councilman, I don't normally think in cost per square foot once I'm buying or selling on my own. I think in that median income or median price range and by subdivision is typically how I think about it. So I mean, you're running in easily 250 and above for almost all of our subdivisions and, and for many of them in advance of $300,000.
Let's, I mean, if you just take a look at the, the listings in the newspaper, just in terms of existing home market, it's incredible just what the price inflation that's occurring. And then if you look at the new homes, Enclaves at Adelaide, which is not.
Duplexes.
Yeah, they're duplexes.
Land dominiums.
Over, they started, I think in the low 200s. And that's just for, I don't, you know, there's not a, you know, elaborate.
We've talked about this for several years with developers and amongst ourselves, but the, the, there's a changing nature of the single family home market that's going on. I think you're seeing an expansion of product type in there, not just single family detached or traditional duplexes or townhomes or those sorts of things, but land dominiums, what the development community would now call move down empty nesters. That's probably equivalent to the variable ride speed motor thing. But you know, it's, it's a very nice, well-appointed, fairly expensive, smaller home with a little bit of land that you control, but is mostly condom, what we would consider condominium for maintenance purposes. And you're not just seeing that in empty nesters, you're seeing that too in first time home buyers as well. But the appointments that come with that home is also what drives up the cost. In addition to labor and construction costs have really, just like we're seeing in our public works, public utilities department, it's quite expensive.
One of, one of the things that I, I was listening to a program the other day where they were talking about existing home and new home sales central Ohio. And they were saying how that currently the, there's kind of a bubble brewing on big houses. When you look at, let's say, the Muirfield and the Tartan Fields type houses. And it's just that, you know, the, the aging baby boomers built these things and they're 3,500, 4,200 square feet. And now there's not a, the current buying public does not want houses at large. And they were talking about in various areas of the country, how now those have become multifamily. They're, they're getting repurposed for other purposes because they're saying these huge houses are just not, not what selling thing. It's not what people wants, kind of going back to what you're talking about, the land dominiums and, and kind of, nobody wants a three quarter acre yard and a 4,000 square foot house now.
Well, I read a lot of different information sources on this subject. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there and frankly, I do think you have to be careful of the source and kind of put it all together. And the market is ever changing. It's sort of like talking about millennials never want to buy a house in a good school district and have children. But what a lot of statistics I read are showing is that's exactly what they want to do. They're just doing it later than generations before. Now, they'll change the market still as well. They definitely want to live in a more urban condition as long as they can and sometimes even, even past, you know, children. But I do think, you know, Murfield, they're not going to, I can't envision them changing some of those into apartment homes there.
There's a conversation this morning at a closing with the realtor from Marysville, and there's some big houses over there.
Correct.
And a developer is buying, or a investor is buying it and turning it into several different apartments. And they're having a fit because they're like, how many people can you let live in these houses in the neighborhoods? And they're zoning, I told them to call you to see what.
I appreciate that.
Because she's meeting with some of their council members and she's really upset about what's going on over there. So it is happening.
I will say that our market is in a good spot with respect to sort of the supersized homes in that we're in that 1,800 to 25, 2,800 square foot house primarily, which is a good spot. It's a good middle spot to be in. And if anything, we're probably missing still, our current comprehensive plan talked about trying to get that upper, upper end. And we're still probably missing that with a few exceptions. But as it turns out, that's, I think we're very reflective of at least the median, the middle of the market.
I am very pleased to be here tonight to talk to you about the administrative services budget for 2019. As you may know, the administrative services reports through me, so Jessica Fowler, Lori Diaz and Whitney House make up the actual DAS, but I supervise their, their work. On the slide that Dave has pulled up, I just wanted to give some highlights of what, since we are not, DAS is not requiring or requesting additional personnel. Wanted to talk a little bit about what you can expect to see at DAS in 2019. Some really important things that we need to do for a city that is ever growing and changing, especially with our employees. We are about halfway through the, or two thirds of the way through our succession planning project in 2019. We're going to be able to really dig down to the leadership competency so that when we are actually hiring people, maybe a step, you know, step one entry level type of jobs, that we'll be able to identify, make sure that they have the qualities that we're looking for for people that can have a lot of tenure with the city and that can one day be our leaders. So you'll, you'll, you'll see that rep in 2019, we'll be working on that aspect. And then we have like an LEI type of process where we can actually test our, test our new employees to make sure that they do have the qualities that we're looking for in a, in our employees. And I'm happy to share that with you when that report is finished. We're also going to do a management development program. One of the places that has always concerned me with the city is that we don't provide, I don't think enough of management development training. And we all agree that it comes on resources. We have found a management development program through a company that we've worked with for years. We want to develop the people who are maybe in the management now and people maybe in, and still on entry level that, so that they actually have the management skills when the possibility of them graduating to middle management or upper management arises. So it's about making sure that we have succession and continuity through our ranks. Through our new finance ERP selection process, we would like to have one, one part of that, a module of that is a new human resource information system. So we'll keep you posted on that after that goes off to bid. And then NeoGov onboarding a number of years ago, council supported us going to completely digital NeoGov application process. NeoGov has an onboarding process that will allow for us to move our employees through the, the, you know, recruiting on through the actual coming onto the city to make sure that they have all the skills that they need, all the tools they need to be successful here at the city of Delaware. Happy to answer any questions about the budget specifically, but I thought I would like to talk about the highlights. The budget is line item budgets on page seven and eight. If you'd like to refer to that and answer those questions.
Jackie, one thing that I'm really concerned with in the next probably five years, we're going to lose Dean, we're going to lose Bill, we're going to lose Jerry Warner, probably all within a couple of years of each other. And I think today we need to start putting somebody shadowing, teaching, whatever, because we're going to all, we're going to be hurt at one time for a whole bunch of very important people in our city. And I'm thinking, and you guys are excited when you should retire, but I just, I'm really worried.
I am too.
And I just don't know how to, we can't double pay someone, but I just don't know what to do.
So that's what the MDP is going to help us with. I have said for a number of physicians is that our situations like this is that it's like a relay race. We're either going to pass off the baton smoothly or we're going to, it's going to be a rough pass and we're going to have to just regroup. The, the good news is Carolyn, is that we have an amazing staff and we do have some people that are in places where they want to learn more and they want to be mentored by. that are in places where they want to learn more and they want to be mentored by the people that you mentioned plus others. We're working towards that, just, but I think the MDP...
Now, look, Dean, he's almost got a whole new staff. And I look at Jerry, and I know we just hired Kevin, I think, as...
Kevin, right.
Okay, so he's younger, but all the other ones, they're all there in age too. And I'm just like, what are we going to do?
Well, and it's not just about ages, it's about experience, especially, I do worry about the code enforcement, not code enforcement, billing inspectors. Jerry Warner, I mean, you know, let's just be honest, he's a rare breed and he is a jewel to this community. And what he brings to his staff in this community is going to be hard to follow up. But one day Jerry is going to want to retire. I'm pretty sure that's...
I mean, it's not that I told Jerry, but then the rest of you, he's out there in the public and he's the one I hear most about.
He is. He's a forward-facing staff member and it's troubling. We've tried to work with a number of the technical colleges to see if we could start getting people in here. The problem is, is a legislative issue, and maybe this is something I can bring to you next year, is I think we need to start putting pressure on the state to change their rules on how you get licensed to be an inspector, because they want you to have, like, forgive me, I can't remember the exact number, but Dave, man, tons of hours. And so, you literally have to pay two people to do one job. And you have to do it, not for a month, but, Dave, do you remember the hours?
It's several years under certified.
Exactly. And so, this is something, it's absolutely ridiculous. And Jerry has spoken out to the state about this, he's involved in other conferences, he's well-respected in that group, and he's even gone to them saying, you can't do this, municipalities cannot afford this. And so, I, maybe if council's interested, I'd like to draft some, not legislation, but maybe a letter and just ask the state, you know, give the municipalities a break if you want certified building departments. We can't afford to pay six inspectors to do the work of three. No, I can't think of any municipality that can pay two people to do one job. So, if you're interested, I'm happy, I'm happy to start that ball rolling.
I'd be one of them.
Yeah. Okay.
That's my one concern.
Any other questions I can answer for you? Not just for DAS, I'm happy to answer any questions at all. Okay.
Since we've done the budget a little bit differently this year and we haven't given everybody an opportunity to talk solely about their department and really chew those up, I've asked Jackie to put together a schedule, there are 12 different directors. So, each month we will hear from a different department and they can give us...
Highlights.
Highlights. You know, I just thought that might be nice. Who's going to, who Jackie's going to put first or second or last, but that's, she will do that before, before she retires.
I'll take care of that, yeah, absolutely.
So, it's just something different, so we can kind of condense the budget and just concentrate solely on what we needed to.
So, that completes the departmental budgets. We have, we could take maybe a two or three-minute recess, and we have, show you, we want to talk some other funds, and that's...
Does anybody need a recess?
Or...
Let's go.
Okay. God, I just wanted to have...
Other funds, are there?
There's 1,600.
There are not. [laughter]
It wasn't every fund, at least it was really, I think, to highlight the revenue that comes through the general fund.
I just have a question, I was trying to determine if there were a bunch, I was going to ask it now, but I'll just, the whole 36,000.
Keep pulling. Yeah.
I'm going to briefly try to capture this elusive concept of people trying to figure out where our money comes from and where it goes, and maybe try to dummy down a little bit all this budget data, and then talk a little bit about our miscellaneous funds, and if you have any questions, address those. You know, the average citizen out there looks at money that they pay the city, and it really encompasses, they pay perhaps an income tax, they pay their property tax, which, most of which we don't receive, I think, on average for a residential house, we get about 3% of what they pay in property tax, so it's not a lot. Their utility bill, whether it's water, sewer, storm, whatever else they pay that monthly, and that obviously comes to the city. And then you start getting to a second tier of costs, their cable bill, there's an actual franchise fee, it's not substantial on a per-month basis, but that does come to the city. And then we have any number of other miscellaneous fees, if you build a deck, if you build a permit. But when you look at our general fund, I'm going to focus on that first because that's where the bulk of our discretionary spending is at. It's really two types of revenues. What I labeled here is discretionary revenues and reimbursements. There's a lot of money that flows into our general fund that really is just driven by the expenses we incur, engineering fees, some of the planning fees. If we don't incur those costs, we don't generate that revenue. So, what I've done here is I've broken down those revenue streams into our general fund between the discretionary and the reimbursements. Our primary discretionary revenues obviously is our income tax. Next is property tax, which is substantially below that. Investment income, local government fund is state income taxes that are collected and distributed back to the cities and municipalities. That cable franchise fee, that's about what we collect on an annual basis, and then some miscellaneous stuff. Other than that, there, on that other side, there's a number of other minutia-type of things, fees and whatever else, but they're all fees for services. If you don't incur the service, you don't get the fee. I don't know if I can do this, I don't usually...
Just real quickly, our local government fund, that was cut in half.
Years ago, that was approaching 2 million.
Probably 1.2 million dollars today. And that's one of the campaign budgets, is hopefully to look at that.
So, I took those revenues, and then I'm breaking down our general fund expenditures. On the left, you'll see basically our city general fund departments, but I grouped them a little bit. Under city administration is city council, city manager, DAS, some of those generalized, I've got legal, finance, police, planning, engineering. General costs are some of our overhead costs, our audit fees, building costs, a lot of them attributable to general fund-type of activities, risk management, some of those things. And then we do allocate some of our general fund money to the street maintenance fund, parks maintenance, capital improvements, and then there's some reserve and miscellaneous transfers. So, I took those budgeted numbers, and those tie out to our general fund budget request for 2019 is 23 million, 971,000, 947. I offset them with the reimbursable costs. So, then you can look at net expenditures. And an extreme example, as you look at the planning department, their budget's 1,268,000. But we recoup fees and then revenues of over a million dollars to offset that, so the net cost is 202,000. You know, likewise, a lot of engineering and some of the other areas. So, looking at that net expenditure, and then a percentage over there for where the bulk of that goes. This is the general fund, as we have it structured, when you compare us perhaps to other cities, most cities will have their fire department and their general fund. Here, we did years ago, we also had municipal courts, so ours is bigger than that. But I also looked at it and said, let's kind of throw the fire department back in. The only reason we segregate that into fund is because we have a dedicated income tax that has to be spent on fire EMS, we show that in a separate fund. But I added this in, so, and I call it just general tax and fee revenue. So, you look at our income tax at 1.7%, and that doesn't include the parks and rec amount, that's just the 1.7 that goes to operations. About 26 million, a half million is what we're projecting 2019. And then below that, you can see most of the other revenue streams aren't that substantial. So, where does that money go? And again, this doesn't include utility fees, which is water and sewer, Blake, we can talk about that, but they're self-supporting. And then, again, just looking at the expenditures there, where the bulk of that goes, obviously you can see the fire department's up there at the top and the police department, and then below that, where those costs are going. Of note, you have street maintenance, 1.7 million, that's not the public works budget, that's just the direct transfer from our general fund to cover operations. Speaking of street maintenance, this is kind of, it's not necessarily, you're not going to tie this back into the public works budget, but what I've done here is looked at some of our street improvement and maintenance costs that are paid for by city-collected funds. This doesn't include any grants. If we get 16-million-dollar grant to do a bridge, or, this isn't in that. This is just, the revenues are gas taxes, which again is something people pay, citizens, and they may notice that. We do get some of that money, it typically goes state and then they distribute it back. License fees, we do have a 10-dollar permissive fee each time you renew your license plate. If you read the paper, you saw where the county's...
County's proposing to increase those. That was supposed to go up for cities as well.
And so, Tom did all that leveraging behind the scenes, and county gets more money. We don't get anything. But anyways, license fees, that all has to, gas tax and license fee all has to be spent, it's restricted, it can only be spent on road maintenance improvements. Then I have two other line items. One is that 1.7 million I referred to as far as the income tax general fund transfer to the operating public works budget. Then we also transfer a little over 2 million in 2019 into our capital improvement plan. And I went through and I isolated the costs that were attributable to the roads or road maintenance or something related to that, including, you know, the equipment for public works, we buy that out of this, purchase that out of the capital improvement plan. And then below that, the operation budget is just what the public works budget is, 3.3 million, their equipment that they have budgeted for 2019 out of the capital plan, and then other capital projects. This is just Delaware's, this is one of those things, if we ever get to that point of talking at another level, showing this type of analysis with some other communities around here, north south all around, you might be surprised what, you know, how that compares. I think we're going to be on the high end in the, from the standpoint, if you look at the total expenditures here of city available funds, 4.9 million, a little over 3 million comes out of our general 1% income tax. And I think you're going to find that's quite unique, so there's quite a bit being allocated. Doesn't necessarily mean it's getting it all done, but it is a pretty substantial amount. Just a couple other related comments, just from an informational standpoint. We talked a little bit about utility rates when Blake was up here and that they might increase. I don't know if anybody's paid any attention, but I did do some calculations over there. Since 2012, our utility bill, the monthly bill, which includes all of it, has increased on average less than four-tenths of a percent per year. It went from about 72.54 a month in 2012, right now it's at 74.61, but I don't get any letters to the editor about, wow, I can't believe their costs are that much below inflation. So, and looking into 2019 and beyond, we will have to, on the water side probably, that's probably one of our utilities, it's really a little bit pinched, but I think we're in pretty solid shape with our utilities, water, sewer, refuse, and should be able to sustain service moving, services moving forward. I did have another slide here. One of the other, I just want to touch on real quickly, is we do have financial management policies, and this is just general related to our budgets that we adopted, the last time we updated them in 2014. Talked about a couple other modifications, but never did actually make those. One of the financial management policies we have adopted is that our general fund balance is equal to 17% of the estimated annual expenditures. And from page two of the operating, or the line item budget, you can see we'll meet that criteria going into 2019. And basically, we're looking at the end of 2019, any carryover balances and revenues less expenditures. Actually, I think it'll be above that. 2018, we're poised to have a pretty good budget year, revenues up more, expenditures pretty much in line with what we anticipated. We also have a...
Can I stop you?
Sure.
Because my question's kind of related to what you just said.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
That's fine.
Okay, so, my question is, and I'm trying to figure out what I'm missing or what I'm not remembering, how is our fund balance going down when we have our revenues exceeding our expenditures? So, like, for example, I'm looking at the total revenue for 2018, and our fund balance should be higher than 4463707, except for the carryover encumbrance. What was that?
That's, each year we have purchase orders that are issued that are relative to a given budget year. We have a purchase order cutoff date coming up here in a couple weeks, but a department may go out there as part of their 2018 budget that they got authorized, they may go out and, Bruce, who might buy 10,000 worth of ammunition, he'll place an order. It was budgeted for in 2018, and that's the issue's purchase order, we encumber those funds. We may not get the bill for that until some point in 2019. And then so, in essence, it's kind of like accounts payable, if you want, I don't know if you're in the private sector, but, so, part of that amount is that, it's about 450,000 of that. The other amount is I've kind of, I talked to Tom extensively about this, we've been working through with the BIA this issue of engineering fees and where we stand and how much has been paid in and whether there's going to be refunds issued back. I think that's closer to being resolved, but we had a few years there where we were taking in revenues that exceeded what we were expending. And so, we've, what we're changing is in the past, they prepaid their revenue, you know, their cost, and now we're going to go to an invoicing as they incur cost. But there was this uncertainty about whether we were going to pay back any amounts. And then so, I included about half a million dollars in there for that potential that may or may not materialize, but that's part of what that 950 is.
Because I guess what my concern is, is that we used to be very, very strong about passing balanced budgets. That was something that was really important to us. And this year, we're out of balance, we're planning to be out of balance before we even start the year, 247,565. So, then I was looking back historically, like, we planned to be out of balance before, but we've ended up okay. But I'm trying to look at 2018, we didn't end up okay at all, we ended up severely out of balance. If you look at the page two of the line item, we, our revenue was 23,277,286. Do you see what I'm talking about?
2018, you asked me...
Because when I was looking at the graph on the front page, I'm like, well, how on earth are we losing fund balance?
There's a couple...
Passing balanced budgets.
There's a couple things that are in there too. If you recall, I mentioned a council meeting or two ago, we have a, we had a 27th pay period, it was going to fall in 2019, or because the pay date is January 1st, we could either pay it before the end of 2018. And I indicated at the time, I said, we're in pretty good shape for 2018, so we're going to go ahead and you'll see it in a year in supplemental, that 27th pay period's going to fall in 2018. So, even though our, it's part of the reason why, if you look at our budgeted expenditures of 22,102,000, and the actual is projected 22,865, part of it is incurring that 27th pay period in 2018 as opposed to including it in 2019's budget. And so, that had, you know, a pretty substantial, but for that, I think we're, you know, if you look at revenues for 2018, we're up quite a bit from what was projected, and I think our expenditures are pretty much in line. We didn't budget, again, for the 27th pay period in 2018, but against haphazard of one, six of another, but I pushed it into 2018. Other, you know, if you look at the CIP transfer, we had budgeted 1.8 million, we're actually transferring 2.2 million. Again, that's a bump up part of it as far as we talked through some of the improvements next door, all those things that transpired in 2018. Those aren't ongoing operating-type of costs, so there were a number of those big-ticket item expenditures that are showing up in 2018 that, but for that, we'd be, not that we're in bad shape at all, it's just that that also is reflected in the 2018 numbers. 2019, again, it reflects pretty much a year's worth of activity, being 240,000 out of budget, it, you know, again, it's not, when you look at how we, you know, carry forward funds and where that's at, that's, doesn't concern me in the least bit as far as meeting that 17% target by the end of the year and even moving forward. meeting that 17% target by the end of the year and even moving forward. Because that'll, we typically stay below appropriations and probably 10 more on the side of being conservative with revenue projections, so.
How do we know that we're not going to have another million dollars of carryover encumbrance?
Because consistently, I can look at that. It hasn't changed that substantially. And there's not really anything that I would, you know, it's not like we're going to go out and, out of the general operating fund and pay $800,000 for a piece of equipment that comes out of other funds.
Does anybody else understand what that is? That 950,000?
It's really a combination of two things. It's a reserve based upon, on an unknown at this point. And it's also based upon purchase order, estimated purchase orders.
This is, this isn't an accrual-based budget. It's pretty much cash basis. If you wanted to get a better, more accurate from an accounting perspective, to look at our financial statements. And that way, we accrue expenditures, we accrue revenues, we look at those liabilities and that. This is pretty much a, kind of like a checkbook, cash in, cash out. You can have situations where we could collect a revenue stream in 2018 and receive $500,000 or $600,000 for something that we're not going to pay for those costs until 2019. That, an issue like that alone, all of a sudden, is going to make your 2019 budget out of balance by 500, because the revenue showed up in 2018. So I account for that and, and, and show an amount down there that represents 2008 budget year expenditures. That's the year that they were budgeted for. When they issue those purchase orders, even though we haven't paid it out in cash, I'm going to reflect it here. And that's been done every year since I've been here. The only thing is the number's a little bit higher, again, because of that half a million dollars for that uncertainty related to those engineering fees.
So like in your home budget, if you have $1,000 designated for car repair, you don't use them this year. You keep them in that silo so that when it happens next year, or whenever it happens, the money's set aside. Does that make sense?
It does, but I'm not figuring out where we set it aside because we took fund balance. Our fund balance went from 22 to 19. We're at 5 million, and now we're down to 44. So we're passing balanced budgets. Why is our fund balance decreasing? So we're not-
It's still there. It's at 950. It's still there. It's just not shown down below because we're waiting to see what's going to happen.
It's obligated.
Well, it's obligated to that BIA, stuff he was talking about, refunds. Thank you.
So we may not be spending all of it?
Correct.
We don't know yet. Yes.
Or may have spent any of it.
Yeah.
The, the, the encumbrance, I know it seemed a bit, for our financial statements, we would show that amount each year. And from one year to the next, it doesn't change a whole lot, even though the types of expenditures may. I only show one year because I look at it and say, if, for wiggles and giggles, we stopped being in business, wiggles and giggles. We stopped being in business at the end of 2018, we're still going to pay for these items we ordered and perhaps even got, that just haven't paid for. You know, on the flip side, I could go in there and accrue revenues. There's income taxes that we're going to collect in 2019 that are actually for tax year 2018. We do all those things with our financial statement. This is to try to keep it a little bit simple. I'm just looking at cash flows from that standpoint. What you'll see in, in two years is for the 2018 amount, there won't be an encumbrance number in there, just like there's not any for the prior years. Again, it'll get paid for. It'll show up in the 2019 actual expenditures. The column that has 2018 estimate at the top, some of those expenditures that are listed there were actually encumbrances from the prior year, but we actually paid for them in 2018. Trying not to make that complicated, that the process is, is trying to keep it simple.
So it could be, Lisa, that is in fully, that is in fully obligated in 2019, and that'll add to the fund balance going into for next year. I mean, it's, I think it's being cautious on our part.
It seems like we're being less cautious than we used to be.
Well, I mean, if you look at 2017 budget, we, we were, revenues came in under expenditures, and we ended up fine. I mean, if, you know, for years, we used our financial policies that are established by councils, say we can use, we can apply fund balance as a revenue.
Right. What worries me is though, I think you're misunderstanding, because we're lost in the details. In 2019, we're planning to be out of balance, right out of the gate, by 250,000. Our fund balance, though, is skimming the minimum. So if, if something happened where we were, are you following what I'm saying? We're skimming it pretty close to-
But that's, but that 17.6% is where we want to be.
Right.
I mean, that's what we set. So we was-
We had to pin ourselves down.
You said it's, you said it's 17%.
Right. So we don't have, in other years, we've had a bunch of wiggle room.
Hmm, I don't know. You know, you really got to look at what was originally presented in prior years. This is the 2018 budget. For 2017, we budgeted revenues of $21,320,000 and expenditures of $21,574. $250,000 out of budget in 2017. Our actual numbers came in, revenues of 21.9 million, expenditures of 21.3. That's pretty consistent. I can go back as far as you want to. I used to give a spreadsheet that would show that. So that dynamic's not changing. For 2018, our budget projected, budget document for 2018 projected a year-end fund balance of 17.1%. We were pretty close. We were, you know, the revenues exceeded, or were about the same as expenditures for 2018. For 2018, but for allocating an additional $400,000 or $500,000 for the building improvements over there, but for a 27th pay period, it's probably 600, 700, 800,000, we would be way beyond that. 2019, yes, it's projected at 17.6, but I'm pretty comfortable that we'll be, by the end of the year, probably more, you know, $300,000, $400,000 on the positive side. That dynamic has been that way for a number of years. We tend to budget conservative. I could go out there and then project revenues of 25 million and deal with that same dynamic. We've oftentimes spent more time over the years, way before this council, this concept of a budget, a balanced budget, and we just really get lost in the minutia. It's why we put in place that, that management policy of saying, we're going to have a targeted carryover balance of 17% by the end of the year. And if things go south and our revenues for whatever are down 20%, then we will have to adjust and we'll have to make sure that we have going forward a 17% carryover balance. And so we'll have to cut back on service if that occurs. I don't think there's any chance it's going to occur, but that's how we can actively manage our budgets as we move forward. The other element that was put in place back then is this general reserve fund. Up there, the second line, it says equals 5% of the prior year general fund revenues. We're going to, we'll hit that. The 2018 general fund reserve balance is 5.3%. We set up that fund specifically to deal with this notion of a rainy day fund. Is it raining? What happens? That becomes a budget stabilization fund where we can tap into that if we had some situation. PPG shuts down. And so we have the ability to cover that for three or four or five years, a major issue like that. It gives us plenty of time to adjust our expenditure patterns. So we have quite a bit of flexibility. I think we're in very good shape from that standpoint, that even catastrophic type of things happening to us, we'll have two or three or four years or more to react. And if things don't turn around or come back to where they were, then we've got a long time to adjust our service levels down to wherever we're going to be moving forward. And I don't think there's anything in 2019 budgets that, that really hinders that, that, that ability. Other than that, we had some other reserve policies. Our health insurance fund, our costs have ticked up this year. You'll see a year in supplemental. Quite a bit of it's reimbursed through our stop-loss coverage, which is good. But that has some upward pressures on our premiums in future years. But we're in pretty good shape with our health insurance fund, even with those higher costs. And we have, again, a reserve policy to make sure that we're not going to, you know, run into major problems. And we do meet that, that reserve requirement. It's basically saying that we, we set up a reserve to cover our incurred costs, but that haven't been paid out, plus 25% of the years, prior year's net cost. And we're at 30%. Workers' comp, because we pretty much self-fund that, it's another big expenditure that we have some, some cost in. And we're way beyond the 50% of average prior five-year cost. In fact, I'll probably hold back on, on the amount that's budgeted out of the, you know, for workers' cap cost moving forward, because we're in a pretty solid position with that reserve fund balance. It's not as much of an issue now as it was five, six, seven, eight years ago, but the rec levy, it was another one. A rec levy, income tax, fund balance exceeds the maximaneal debt service. That's, we're way above that. And then our enterprise fund balances, primarily water sewer refuse, that we have some revert, reserve balances, just on the operational side. We have balances there for capital projects also. That, that our reserve balances are from 20% to 25% of operating expenses. Water's at 28.7, sewers at 81.9. Refuse is a little bit low, but it's because we just built, basically paid cash for that, that building out there. So that'll, that'll turn, get about 20% here soon. So I think we're in compliance with our financial management policies. That's really it with the PowerPoint. Again, other questions that you may have. You know, that, that, that notion of trying to weed through these budgets and, and, you know, figure out where our money's going. You can, you can take a look at that a little bit. If you have other thoughts or other questions related to that, it's, it's really, it's just a lot of numbers, but you can kind of boil it down to its core parts. Really, from a discretionary standpoint, our income tax is our primary revenue source. Most of it goes to fire and police. And then, you know, with the detail of where the rest of that goes to. Our utility rates cover our water sewer refuse operations. We do get a lot of grant money. We have a lot of other miscellaneous type of things. Real quick, because that was part of what I wanted to talk about, was the other funds. I did give you a handout, and I won't go through all these numbers. But this summarizes all of our funds. We have a lot of them, primarily as a public entity. Many of our revenue sources have to be segregated, and we can only spend it on certain purposes. But the first page there and the second page is just a continuation. I've grouped these funds into some categories. The first grouping is our operating funds. And all this is showing is what we have in the budget, what the unencumbered fund balance, meaning there's not any purchase orders outstanding, projected revenues, projected expenditures, and what the year-end projected fund balance will be. And, you know, you can see the general fund, that lumps together all the, you know, police and planning and engineering and all those sort of things. These other funds, why do we have them as separate funds? Because there's a red, like, street maintenance and repair, because we have gas tax money and license fees. We have to show that as a special revenue fund. And likewise with many of these others. Below that, we have a bunch of capital improvement funds. You can see all of them there. And there's some big numbers coming in and out. And then, you know, the fund balances. We have debt service funds, which is where we pay for our, our debt. Now, on the second page, we have just miscellaneous special revenue funds that aren't operational. A lot of these are court funds, or grant funds, or CDBG, or our community, community promotion, community promotions fund is listed here. And then below that, the bottom half of the page, we have what's referred to as trust and reserve funds. This is where we set aside some of these reserves I've talked about. And, you know, some other funds that are, that are trust funds technically, or just like the mayor's donate, that we can only, you know, it's, we can't just use that for other purposes. And below that's the final funds is internal service funds. So total expenditures, 119 million. That ties back into the ordinance that you have in front of you for the 2019 budget. The last page there is I took all those amounts and really eliminated all the transfers from one fund to the next and where things were double counted and, and whatnot. And basically showed what our actual budget, if you eliminate the double counting for transfers, what our actual expenditures will be next year and, and money paid out. And it's $94,624,889. Again, a lot of numbers. I wouldn't worry too much about the detail. In the budget, you have each one of these funds, and you have, some of them have expenditures associated with it. Be more than happy to answer any questions you may have, either tonight or at some point if you had. You know, I think, Jim, you had sent in a question about why do some of the funds have fund balances and others don't? Generally, if we set up a separate fund, and again, we have to do that, depending on the nature of the revenue that's coming in, it'll show a carryover balance. We have to keep that money in there. So if it's, you know, if it's the state highway improvement fund, state determined years ago, a portion of the state gas tax was going to be given to municipalities, and it had to be spent not just on roads, but on state highways. So that money comes in. If we get $85,000 a year and we only spend $45,000 of it, you know, that, that $40,000 is in a fund balance and has to go into the next year. We can't take it out of there and use it someplace else. So typically, if there's a fund balance there, it's because there's a, a revenue stream that is restricted in what the, what the money can be used for.
Can we get the slides that you had earlier?
Yeah, I'd like to copy those.
I did bring those, just in case.
I was trying to steal Tom's. He wouldn't give it to me.
That was, that was good info. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is definitely what, I know I've been looking for over the last couple of years. This, this really hits the switch button.
At some point, as we move into 2019 and talk about potential road costs, maybe a weather year hot, some of this stuff, hopefully I could find some time to really, if it helps, if you, if you get something other than just looking at ours. If I were to take that stuff and say, okay, here's what ours looks like, what these other communities look like, I think it's even more, can better, get a little bit better idea. As I was sitting there, I was looking at city of West, Westerville. You know, if we bring in, what was the number, 20, 29? $26.5 million in income tax. There's just like 46 million. And pretty much none of that covers, goes to fire EMS. So those are just the raw, doesn't mean we, you know, our taxes aren't high enough here, doesn't mean we need to increase them, but, you know, they have a revenue stream there. Population's roughly the same. They probably have maybe roughly the same roadways and things, maybe a little bit more expensive roads, but, but again, that can be helpful too, to contrast that a little bit and get a little bit more of a sense.
Thank you. My brain is still stuck on $950,000. That's almost a million dollars. We have this budget. We know we're spending $5,000 on travel and training. But I'm just supposed to say, $950,000 is, it'll work out. It seems a huge amount of money. And let me tell you why I'm specifically concerned about it. Because in years past, when our fund balance went high, we got to spend it down. So I was looking for money that we could spend down to get caught up on roads. But it's not there, and I can't wrap my brain around where it went.
It didn't go anywhere.
So is it going to show up next year?
If, if they come in here and somehow we have to pay back $500,000 of engine, $500,000 of engineering fees, would you want me to say, oh, we need to cut some budgeted improvements because we didn't account for this potential? I don't know whether it is or isn't, how likely it is. It's been ongoing negotiations. It was, and I've mentioned this in past year, over the last couple of years, taken in quite a bit in engineering. I think 2017, we brought in like $1.8 million. And the way we would do it in the past is these developers would pay upfront. It might be two or three years until their development. Sometimes they pay upfront and, you know, that's part of the issue why the BIA came in and said, we need to revisit this. I don't think we've been purposely or doing anything wrong in overbilling, but there was this, we had collected quite a bit over a two-year period.
They paid for inspections that they never got, is what they're trying to say. So they paid all this money. So they're trying to figure out a better way to bill them appropriately. But they may came back, come back later and say, we didn't get 10 inspections. We only got six. We want to pay back for that money. We want to pay back for that money. So he's just holding it back to wait and see, do we have to pay it back?
Just being prudent. It's not going to go anywhere.
Could we get a breakdown of what all of that is being held for? It's just a huge amount of money to just kind of have.
It's really, in years past, that encumbrance was $400,000, $500,000. It's averaged that. Again, as I said, I did bump that up because if I have to turn around and refund $500,000 of prepaid engineering fees, I don't want to have to come back here and say, hey, that 17% target, we're going to have to cut back or we're not going to meet it because we didn't account for this. So if it doesn't materialize and we end, there's a chance we may not have to refund it. It just depends on what we do moving forward and how that plays out. Then that'll be sitting there. It'll be in the fund. I'll come back in. I don't know when we'll know definitively, but I can let you know and say, hey, that reserve there, so where it'll be, it'll just be in the fund balance.
I just think we should at least have a breakdown of what we're holding almost a million dollars for.
It's just two things. There's not a break, I can't give you, other than writing down, $450,000, right, at any given point in time, if you look at my finance report, there's, there's, you know, month-over-month-over basis, there's outstanding purchase orders of about $500,000, $450,000. It's that, plus this half a million dollars. I don't, I can't break it down any further than that.
And we'll have a better idea, Lisa, probably the next, probably after we pass that fee ordinance, what the status of those, you know, that reserve is. And if it turns out that we don't have, that we, that we're just setting the rules going forward, then that's available when we come back to you.
Then there's no refunds, and moving forward, we'll incur the costs and we'll bill them for it, then we'll collect it. So.
And they're going to have a short period that they can pay. I mean, they don't get the inspection until they pay the bill?
Well, that's what we're working on right now. Try to keep it at a minimum amount, and if they don't pay, then hopefully we still have the leverage to come back and say, hey, we're going to shut down your development because you're in arrears. That was part of the reason years ago why they shifted to a pay-up-front process is because it was like pulling teeth to go after some of these developers to get them to pay their inspection fees.
So if we usually keep $400,000 in that encumbered carryover, and nobody, we don't own anybody, any developers, we don't own any of them, then that $425 just goes to the general fund and.
Stays where it's at, and that carryover amount would be $500,000 higher. So it's not going to go anywhere. It's in the general fund. The money's in there. And if someone came in tomorrow and said, it's been decided, there's no retroactive paybacks, we're just moving forward, and from here on out, it won't happen because they're not going to pay in advance, then that carryover balance instead of 4.463 becomes 4.963 million.
And then we have a discussion we could have. That would be great news. Because then we could pay down fund balance. We could get ourselves back to 17% like we did before and maybe get caught up.
But we don't know that yet.
We don't know that, yeah. Just, I'm looking, I'm looking for.
We all are.
And I'm trying to figure out, well, how is our fund balance going down? If we were having consecutive balanced budgets, where's the fund balance going?
Again, as I've monitored those engineering fees, in 2017, we took in $1.826 million. This year, it looks like it'll be $1.35 million. We've spent a lot of time with the engineering department for 2018. They tracked their individual hours. Prior to that, they hadn't. And on the expense side, my concern was we haven't incurred that cost yet. If we were to stop taking any more new development and just pay out for what we've already collected money for, it'll easily be $500,000.
That's not, that's a scenario that's pretty remote, but.
Well.
The point is.
Depending how that plays out, because we have developers that paid $250,000 and hadn't started their development yet. So again, it may seem odd to you, but we've had some dynamics. If I go back two years prior to 2017, we only took in $600,000 in engineering fees. There were some substantial monies paid upfront. And I've been trying to get my handle on this issue with the BIA as an issue, but to me is, at any given point in time, what is this prepaid amount? Because I need to anticipate that. If we stop, if the development shuts down and we still have to pay out these inspection fees, what's that going to do to balancing for future budgets? So I need to account for that and know that that's going to, more than likely, potentially occur. So, I mean, you're just looking at it as this 500, but you're not looking at the $1.8 million we took in when I was showing the, those are reimbursable type of, it's not like it's a tax revenue stream. It's a cost that's intended to just cover our cost of operations. And because developers have prepaid, it's kind of like your magazine subscription. If you pay two years in advance, they're not, that magazine company can't go spend that money because, you know, they got to send you a magazine for the next two years. Anyways, it's, I think it's a prudent, reasonable amount, and who knows, maybe at some point, you know, there'll still be, even if we were changing, there's people that have paid that we haven't incurred those costs for. If a developer comes in here tomorrow and the way we're still operating, and they give us $250,000 in cash for what has been calculated to be their inspection and plan reviews fees for the next 18 months, how should I show that in this budget? It's going to show up as a revenue in 2018. My expense is going to be next year. Again, I know that dynamic, and that's why I have to reflect it. It sounded, you know, seemed confusing to you, but it's.
I just want to, I mean, I think a fundamental part of my job is to understand what we're bringing in, like a bird's eye view of, you know, if we're passing balanced budgets, why is our fund balance going down? And just making sure that I have a handle on that because I'd be a bad council person if I didn't. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? All right.
Okay, I don't think we need a meeting Thursday night.
That pretty much concludes it. I had a, I did have a budget analyst position in the city manager's budget. That's the only major change there. That's really just to restore a position that brought a lot of.
That's in your.
Yes.
In my, reflected in my budget. That would work, that position would work out of my office and would be coordinated between finance and the city manager's office. It adds a tremendous amount of value to our financial operation and gives us, starts building a little more depth in terms of our financial operation. And if you talk to the department heads that were here back in 2000, when John Lee was here, the one and only budget analyst we had, I think he brought a lot of value to providing a stronger linkage between the departments, the city manager's office, and the financial operations. And approaching a budget of, you know, the $94 million, just a lot of transactions that go on in here. And I think it can also improve this programmatic, outcome-based budget that we're trying to do. And also, to the extent that we want to provide more civic engagement and more involvement with our budget with our citizens, the position can also be valuable in that respect too. So that's the only major, the only major change going on in our budget.
Chris, did you have a question?
No.
Are we going to have any executive session time at the meeting on the 10th to discuss some of the personnel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can start early if you'd like. Yeah, we can have, you can have it now, actually, if you'd like. We can.
We've got your three hours.
We can turn back.
10.
Okay.
Okay.
Speaking of changing times, in 2019, I'm going to change all the boards and commission meetings to 6:30 for 19. We'll go see how it goes. We did that monkey survey. It was split between 6:00 and 6:30, but the people that work in Columbus, six o'clock's, they're going to struggle for them. So we'll do 6:30 for 19 and see how it goes. Trying to save money, they help the staff so that they don't have to stick around longer and just get things done earlier. We'll leave council at 7:00 because executives at 6:30, and that'd be starting us at 6:00. We'll just, let's try the boards and commissions for 2019, see how that goes. Be okay with that?
Yes. Sister City, did anybody?
Sister City's already at 6:00. They've always done it at 6:00.
I wanted to tell them, so we've only got $1,000 in budget for Sister City.
What page is that?
95, last year.
Struggle.
So are we sure that's going to be enough? I don't know what all the plan, but, you know.
We don't have anything planned for 19.
Well, we, we do have the art exchange.
The children's art.
That's going to be happening at the Arts Castle, starting in December. So at some point in August, we need to transport the students' artwork over to Sakata. And then the actual art will be returned in 2020. So then I guess I would reflect that expense.
The Community Promotions Committee looked at that and kind of looked at what we had coming up for the next year and said that that would be enough to cover the postage for that program. Other than that, we don't have anything.
Other than the, you're sending newspapers over, what the cost to send those, send out quarterly or sort of? We're working on it.
We need to. I have a stack about this big I need to go through, but it's just because we have such an expense friendly.
Yeah. Why are we sending newspapers?
They have a place up in their library in their schools, and they want to see what's going on in our community. We asked them to, they send it to us, we send them theirs, except we don't send ours translated, so we have to work on that. So that was their request.
Japan, Germany, or both?
The only other.
Just Japan at this point.
Yeah.
We potentially have an expense, but it's probably in and out year. We're looking at trying to do that Ken Doman exhibit, that would be probably 2021 or 2021. So, but that's not, if it turns out that we anticipate needing additional funds, we would just come back and ask you, there is a, there is a balance in there. I do know that there was a question or there was a comment made in the Community Matters newsletter about Community Promotions Fund and how that's, what the criteria is. And I believe if you want to just review that, that's, you're on that as well as Chris? And you receive applications?
Yes, we receive applications that are open to the community. Each application is scored based on a specific rubric. There's, that's available if somebody would like it, just certain things that each application is scored upon. We then take a look at the amount of money that we have in that fund and rank the things based upon how well that they scored, how much they promote the City of Delaware, whether it's a one-time request or if it's a yearly request, and we allocate the money that way. And then make the recommendation to council for ultimate.
And that's what's reflected in here?
Yes.
Is what was decided on by the committee.
And I know that the score breakdowns and all of that is available if anyone would like to see that, to know how things were ranked. Not an easy thing to do.
Any other discussion? Okay, we are adjourned at 9:10.